So, okay, we'll open the meeting at 6:10. I'm calling the meeting to order. Adjustments to the select board agenda? Anybody? Oh, good.
Okay. So I'd like to talk about open meeting law and also talk about my duties, my volunteer duties, to post meeting minutes on the town website.
Okay.
I'd just like to add that to the agenda whenever the board feels the time is all right to talk about that.
Okay. Okay, so we can talk about that when we talk about the rest of your stuff, I guess.
Okay.
We've approved most of the bills and the payroll orders. We've approved the minutes from the November 13 meeting. Any public comment? No public, no comment? Okay. Town clerk report. See, we're right on time. 6:15.
I had received an email from Dave Rocha. He is the head maintenance person for OSSU now, who took Larry Eldredge's position. And he wanted to know who was responsible for the maintenance of this room. And when I looked through the lease, it looks like the school is responsible, the annex is maintained by the school district. Because what they want to do is they want to rip up this carpet and put down vinyl tiles, something that's much easier to clean. And from me reading this, and I passed it past Brandy also, it's the school's responsibility.
Sounds clear.
Okay, did either one of you want to look at this lease?
I've read it before.
You got a copy.
Be happy to look again, sure.
I highlighted the section where I think it's...
School district. Yeah? It's pretty clear to me.
I mean, when they do say like, you know, put up new shades and stuff, they don't come and ask us, so...
Are they wanting the town to share the cost? Is that why you...
Although we know he just wanted to make it clear in his own mind whose responsibility it was.
Okay. Do you want this back, Robin?
Yep, I'll keep it with this.
Although it looks like the fire alarm may be finished, or at least there are no wires hanging out like there were a few days ago.
Oh, good deal.
Yeah. I don't know whether it's all hooked up yet, but...
We could start a fire and see what happens.
Yeah, you got your lighter with you.
And the lift at the office has been inspected and it's passed inspection.
Yay.
And within there, they also sent a form where we can ask for an inspection agreement for either one year or three years, and the cost will stay the same at $150. So I opted for the three years.
$150 for three years, or...
A hundred for each, okay, three years.
Okay, yeah, well...
It didn't say how much it would go up if we didn't.
Okay. 150... Three years. And that is the same company that's been doing the inspections?
Yes.
Not the company that was doing the maintenance? Okay, all right.
And then the next thing I have is the town report. I just want to remind everybody that last year we passed an article stating that town meeting will be the Saturday before town meeting day, so which will be February 24th.
Oh. That's good to remind people.
Which means stuff needs to be in sooner.
Well, a few days, yeah.
And the majority of the appropriations for the nonprofits, those are coming in very steadily.
Okay.
And I think that's what I have for tonight.
Okay, have you heard back, or do you have any contact information for the people on the Kipps Road? That's the only name we have on it.
It is... Brian Barber and Colin Cole.
Brian, okay. Did they leave any phone number or anything?
I have the phone number at the office on a different piece of paper.
Okay.
Yep.
So they expect to hear back from us first?
Yep.
I think you'll have to come to a meeting or two about that.
Are you planning to call them, Diana, or should one of us reach out?
I don't know where it is. Okay, county treasurer's report?
Sorry, she hasn't been here. Income over the last two weeks, cash receipts, took in $6,390.67. That was delinquent taxes, copies, land postings, recording, vault fees, zoning, et cetera. Expenses over the last two weeks, payroll, $9,930.18. Accounts payable was $45,315.77. Over the last two weeks, I transferred from the money market to the checking $2,010,000 even.
Glad we had so much in the money market.
You've had it for long.
Oh, no, it doesn't yet. It's not there any longer.
You spent it as though you transferred it?
What are the goodies? Any questions? Still waiting on the BLCT to finalize, finish up the claim.
I noticed that in the second claim that I didn't follow up and get a picked copy of, but I do, I did notice that the amount was the same as the first one.
Oh, yeah, they hadn't adjusted it since...
They hadn't done the floor thing or any of the, any of the furnishings, the whatever was lost from down there? You have a record of that?
Yes, we have a list. Yeah, they have a list, yeah.
Oh, you've given it to them?
Yep.
Because they didn't put it on here? They did not.
So we can ask, if we want a portion upfront, they can do a portion. I would just like it finalized, did and done. But they still haven't gotten back after I had sent the quote for just the sheetrock and stuff.
For the what?
Establishing the sheetrock downstairs, just re-fixing.
Well, they came up with their own, their own numbers on that.
Right. So we're still waiting. Of course, they're the middleman, BLCT.
Yeah, right, the adjuster has to, yeah.
Brandy, did I understand it correctly that they're going to pay 80% upfront, and then once they get contractor receipts for the work, they'll pay the other 20?
Correct.
Okay.
So we can start, again, it's money upfront, which, yeah.
So if we don't, you know, how, if we buy something that's less than what they expected on their cost estimate, do we...
You know, this is my first rodeo with this one.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't know whether we can just take that. If we save money on one thing, can we spend it on something else that's not on the list? According to...
When I talk to them, I think you can, since you hold it outright, you can just take a, if you come up with a settlement, you can just take the settlement and then do what you want with it.
Really?
I asked them about our claim, and they said the same thing, once we settle, which we know when that's going to be.
Okay. Yeah, I did get a, take a, make a copy of something that came from BLCT that sounded like, you know, they were saying, yeah, put in for whatever, whatever you think. If they want to deny any of it, they can. For example, if we want to put in for new electrical outlets, you know, or new lighting or something like that. They say no? They say no, but, okay. So we're still waiting on that.
All appropriations have been paid and transferred. That means that the library, the cemetery have their money.
And the fire department?
As payments go. We're already locked into, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So the highway has their money. So the due to, due from, last page on your financial statements. FEMA is now $162,615.39.
That's how much...
We have spent already on FEMA.
Oh, okay.
Well...
So...
Minus payroll, that's not included within that, yeah.
So that number, we can anticipate to be reimbursed, what does it say, 87.5%?
87.5.
Or more.
Or more.
So it does seem like if our road crew spent all their summer on FEMA reimbursable stuff, that we might come out ahead on that line item.
Yeah, I think so.
And the health insurance, have you found out any more about that?
It's been a nightmare. The phone system has been, anyway. All I have comparison is Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Blue Cross Blue Shield is more expensive.
That's the only thing you have to compare it to what we already have?
MVP.
MVP? Do you expect, are there any others?
There's different plans, there's different, I mean, if I wanted to go on to Health Connect and, but don't, whatever you see, do not call or email your contact to any insurance company, because they won't stop calling now.
So there's that phone, that number on TV that you can call and get all your answers, right?
Yeah.
Really? And I tried to call, I can't even go through.
There's a, yeah, there's one named Amy who used to call me a couple times a day. I don't know what happened to her, I haven't heard from her for a while. Okay, still pending. So you'll talk that over with the guys, right, before you make any decisions? We just have the two of them on health insurance?
There's two, yeah. Their cost is going up and ours...
And the town's is too.
Yep. But Blue Cross Blue Shield is almost double what...
Really?
Yeah, so...
Double all...
For the same plan.
Double MVP?
It's, it's much more costly here, to, it would be to the town and to, so...
You guys are keeping track of that?
What's that?
You're keeping track of that? The health insurance? Has she shared any of that?
Brandy had a very brief conversation about it, that something was happening, but...
Their rates go up every year.
I haven't heard any numbers or anything.
Like everything, right?
Have we looked at Cigna?
Like everything else, yeah.
What's that?
Have we looked at Cigna at all?
No, I have not.
Cigna's a company that I used to have in Callas. When we were trying, when this happened there, the rates started going up. We looked at Cigna, and they were cheaper. Just another option, I don't know.
I know our state employees portion is going up like 14% or something like that. And the cost of living increase is only 3% maybe, so we'll talk about that when we do our budgeting.
That don't calculate. That don't calculate.
It doesn't really. No. Okay, so Elsie, I see they're making a mess downtown here.
Yes.
I wonder whether you could plow the snow, the store building there, all the snow that builds up. Could you keep that area plowed out so they can park over on the side of the building while the mess is going on downtown?
Sure.
I don't know where you would put it, but...
As long as their vehicles aren't there.
Yeah, well, I mean, right, yeah, they, still, as of today, they were still parking right in front.
Yeah.
But if you clear that out, and I'll suggest that they park by the side, the owner said he's not going to be around for a while.
As long as there's no snow on the road.
I was going to say, you're going to have to be careful with that, because that snow comes off that roof, and if it damages it, and the town suggests that they park there, the town is going to be responsible.
But they could park back by the garage, too. That would be not, not as steep of a roof. I mean, snow does come off, but it's not like a big...
Oh, yeah, it is. Trust me. I've shoveled it.
Really?
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, it seems like, do the guys who work on that stuff have to bring their cars to the site and park somewhere?
There's going to be some challenges. I was there. I've got the big boss's contact information, so if it keeps being a problem, we can talk. They seem, I had a meeting and talked to the boss today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're just starting, so they haven't got...
It's a little disorganized, and they were trying to cut trees and dig holes today.
They haven't got a team yet.
Move a bunch of equipment around, they had trailers and... It's going to be a not fun for any of us time.
I mean, we could, we could, on the, on the Cabot roadside, on the park side, I could widen that a little bit.
That's probably a better choice.
That would, that would allow for four or five cars to park.
Yeah, that'd be good.
But it's more, I don't want to plow it and then they don't use it. I mean, I don't want to do a bunch of work if they're not going to use it. So maybe we should have contact with...
I can give you their...
With the boss and see what his flavor is.
If need be, they can always park up to the blue garage.
The blue garage?
Mom's garage.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, if they're going to have a lot of cars around, they will be responsible for plowing it, or somebody will be. But they would be able to get quite a few cars in there.
Yeah. Well, Paul, maybe if you want to either, either contact him and get with me, or give me his...
I'll give his number before I leave today.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can just reach out to him. Just call him. I think Cabot Road's a good idea, just to have him... They were very receptive. They were blocking up the firehouse, and we had to call the day, and I asked them to move, and they...
Yeah, they're going to be right there. It's not like they're parking and going somewhere else.
Yeah. But I think the Cabot Road would be closer for them.
Yep.
You know, the flaggers, they're going to park their car, and they got to be moving around, so... And it's, wouldn't, wouldn't affect us dramatically, you know, after we parked them there.
Tried to have all the snow canceled for the next month, but didn't seem to take it.
No, they must have had a bad start. It was pretty snowy this morning.
Nobody expected a snowstorm.
Open the door at 2:00 AM, we got called out, I'm like, well, this stinks, the trees in the road.
Geez.
That was supposed to be rain.
Uh huh.
It was pretty thick rain.
Call for rain. It was some surprise when I opened my garage.
Yeah.
Sometimes they get it wrong. A lot of times they get it wrong. Okay. Now, I remember that back in the late winter, I think, we signed an agreement with West Woodbury, and that was only for like, up until July of 2023. And there was another one for this year that we didn't sign at the time for some reason. Do you know? Is that...
There hasn't been one released. I emailed him today to CC everybody in it, so as soon as I hear something from him, you guys will hear.
Oh, from Arbuth...
Yes.
What's his name there?
Dave.
Dave.
Dave Arbuthson, yeah.
Yeah, we entered a contract with him midway through the year.
Right.
By the way, it was only a partial at that time.
Yeah, but I thought there was another one that was attached that was with it, and we just didn't sign it because it was too early.
I think it's just time for, whether we make that contract or he does, whichever.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually they supply me with the contract and the invoice, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I have not heard anything about a design.
Yeah, okay. I do, I'm pretty sure it was expected by the end of the year, so I was just thinking we could just follow up on it, so...
Be nice to have that and know what it's done.
Yeah.
Do you want me to harass him a little?
No, Brandy sent an email, and then I sent one, just explaining that, you know, to him that we were just wanting to check, because it was, we were pretty sure it was going to be due by the end of the year, and we just wanted a status report, so we don't need to do anything else. He responded that he was out of the office until the first, so... He's got another month. So how'd you do over in the county road extension?
I haven't really done much of anything there, actually. I haven't really had time. Been using my manpower on getting the sand pile up, so most of the time we've been there. The excavator's there, on site, and was hoping to be there a lot of time this week, but...
Yeah, darn.
All of a sudden, we got a lot of snow, so that's going to slow things down a bit. I did secure a whole bunch of material for that site. I just got to truck it and store it. I also have...
There's no place over near there where you can store it?
There is. I got permission from Gravels, which is the house right at the bottom on 14th. They said I could stage material there.
So right at the bottom of...
Well, on the bottom of...
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, that little yellow house, yeah, okay.
Right, right at the top of 14th.
Yeah.
I tried to get material from the Calvert and East Callas from the state, but they brought it somewhere else. I don't know if they thought it was too far to truck it or not, but was hoping they would just bring it up there for us and stage it, and we have it, but that didn't work out. But this other option is available, and if we get some decent weather, I'm going to pursue that and just stage it. I mean, we can put a bunch there. I can also put some on the corner, Dog Pond Road. There's a place there that we can store it in the event that we have a minor winter and we can want to deal with that. Or if not, we can have it in the spring and finish up.
So you're not going to keep that folder all winter, right?
No, no, I made it.
I know you probably want it.
Well, I'd like you to buy it, really. But that's probably not in the bag.
Maybe not this year.
No, but, no, it's, once I know that the weather is set in, it's going to go back. And, you know, after this morning, it's, it's setting in, but I'm going to try, I'm going to try this week and next to at least get that really passable to a, to a truck or a, a minimum, a snow machine, some, you know, to get it safe and get the water back in the brook where it's supposed to be. So still, still on the, on that dream of getting it done. I also have to get railings on Carol Ray's Bridge, which won't take long, but still on the agenda. But like I said, the last week or so, a couple weeks, it's been, been focusing on the sand pile, trying to get that done. Because Gravels don't want to balance, they want us to use it all up, what we've paid for.
By the end of next month?
By the close of the year, yeah, yeah. So that's my, that's my hustle there. We're close, we're like 300 yards left or something like that. We're very close, so a couple more days of hauling will have it. When I was, Timmy's truck was down for two or three weeks, that really hurt.
Whoa, really?
Yeah.
Which truck is that, the older of the...
That's the one that we're trading. So it was at the shop, and you'll see an invoice for that.
Yeah, I think I did see one, too.
Oh, good, yeah. But it was, it was also due for inspection, so some of that work was, was to get it inspected.
Yeah, wouldn't want to trade in a truck that's not inspected.
Well, we don't want to, we don't want to have a truck on the road that's not...
Well, yeah, that's more important.
I mean, it would only take an accident, and then we'd be on the hook.
Yeah.
It's better to spend money and get it right. Other than that, unless there's questions, I don't have much to report.
Your guys used to, I'm thinking about plowing some comments I heard. They go right down the middle of the road now, instead of going one side and then the other side?
We haven't put the wings on yet.
Oh.
Because the roads are still soft.
Oh, okay.
And so we don't like to spread the, put the gravel out in the ditches, but we're putting them on. One of them went on this afternoon when we got done plowing.
Okay, so that's why, okay, it looks different.
I mean, you get away with that with one or two inch storms, but when you have an eight inch storm like this morning or a foot, it's not as easy to get along with, so we'll be putting wings on. And that complaint will go away, maybe.
Right.
Did you...
I said maybe.
A gentleman had called the office, he was up in the ditch up on Cabot Road. Did he get ahold of you?
Yeah, he didn't get ahold of me. He talked to Timmy.
Okay, he was just worried about how long, because he wasn't able to find anybody to pull it out yet.
Oh, yeah, I gave him a couple of names. He called back and wanted to know where his car was. I'm like, you're asking me where your car is?
It's still there.
He needed, he needed some landmarks so we could tell the wrecker where to go.
He got the lights on this morning, but clearly the battery's dead.
Yeah.
She blends right in because it's...
Yeah, well, it sounded, from the message I got, it sounded like he went off the road and there was damages to his car, because he was asking for...
There was a tree fell across the road.
Oh, and he ran into it.
And he couldn't stop, and it spun him. Jimmy was down there, and Jimmy moved the tree with our tractor, but there was a tree across the road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so it spun him into the ditch, and there's kind of boulders on that side, so he said one tire, it got hit hard.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah. You know, and I've told my guys, it's, it's okay to pull them if it looks safe. But if it's, if it looks like there's already damage done, or pulling it is going to cause more damage, then we don't do that. No, it's, you know, it comes to a judgment. Sometimes there's a car in the road blocking our ability to go through.
Right, right.
Then the car has to go. We have to, we have to plow, you know, we have to get through. So I usually have the guys use their judgment, or I'll go myself and, and make that call. But this one, it sounded like it was disabled, like there was damages already to his car, so it needed to go on, on a flatbed anyway, so I just told them I couldn't help them with it.
So, anything else from you? You got all your FEMA work wrapped? Oh, how did you do with the railing on the rail trail? Steve Gray.
I got ahold of Steve Gray, yeah.
Okay.
I will keep trying, because I hope he's been out of time.
Do you need a, do you need a phone number? Because I have an I O M.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
456, just open to that page, it's amazing. 456-8862.
When did the trails open? Is it December 15th?
If there's snow, I think.
If there's snow, yeah.
Yeah, and now that the ground's freezing, it's going to be more of a challenge to get posts in there.
Get out there and do it again.
But, I mean, even if we can't, if he doesn't, can't come up with something... But, I mean, even if we can't, if he doesn't, can't come up with something, I'll go put some, at least caution tape with green stakes or something, just something to, uh, you know, illuminate it, illuminate it, so that they can see it at least. But I'll give him, I'll get ahold of him and, uh, see what he has to offer.
Anything from you?
I got nothing.
Good. Uh, Greg, Greg was in today, just, uh, to say hi. He said that he's available. Uh, he's still staying on his vacation, using up his time, but he said if I got in the bind, he's, he's available.
Next week he'll be back?
I believe it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's got a doctor's appointment one day next week. So, he'll be in and out in, uh, January. He goes to, he retires.
Retire, yeah.
And he said he's still.
On call?
Still would be able to work like twenty hours or whatever his limit is for retirement. So, we'll use him where we can and if we don't need him, we don't need him.
Is Tim's truck back?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Tim, they're able to work full, full head of steam at this point. I even have the, the little six wheel truck is up and running.
What's that, the Low Pro? No, that's the.
Five fifty.
It is, but the.
Five fifty.
No, the, the other one, the one that.
The one that rolled over.
Chloride.
The ninety nine, ninety nine dump truck?
Nah, I don't know what hole it is.
The one that you rebuilt from the?
The one we put the mower in out of the rollover.
Okay, alright.
I mean, that's just for a absolute emergency. If we don't have a truck that will go, we'll get that, we'll at least put sand on.
Oh.
And, uh, I guess you could plow with it, but it's more just, uh, emergency.
Good.
Yeah.
We received the Gorman contract, um, but there's different, yeah. Greg Parkers is the one who signed off on it last year, or, last year, two thousand nineteen, signed off on it, but, um, is there a piece of equipment that we have from the Gorman that they let us use if? Yeah.
Well, it's, it's the transfer tank, the application tank, which goes in the back of the truck and we use that to spray the chloride on the roads. That, when that contract was put together, it was, they would give you the tank if you bought a certain number of gallons. We've expired, we've expired that, a number of gallons, so now the tank is ours. It belongs to us. That's all that contract is saying.
Okay.
Well.
It's just saying that because the company was bought out by a new company and the CEOs want everything pretty, pretty. So, that's all that is. It's just, it's just signing, they're signing over that equipment to us, so it's ours.
The agreement also provided that the town would purchase specific amounts of liquid calcium from Gorman annually, as noted. In the agreement, the town had the option to purchase the equipment for thirty-five hundred after the town purchased twenty-seven thousand gallons of such liquid chloride. However, after the town purchased seventy thousand dollars, uh, seventy thousand gallons, Jared Gorman transferred title of the equipment to the town and the town accepted such title. I am closing a bill of sale confirming this transfer.
So, it's no, it's no cost to us. It's just, it's just transferring ownership.
You understand?
And that resides on the new one, or it doesn't? The five fifty, it goes in the back of the five fifty, wasn't it? The one?
Nope. No, that's too heavy for that. It goes in the, the six wheeler that I just mentioned. It's a thousand gallon tank with a pump and a T-bar that's, that's spread, it sprays out of. Um, it's pretty short. There's really not much left to it. After six years of chloride, it's really not much, which is, you know, something we have to be thinking about also.
You wanna sign that?
Repairing or replacing.
Do you also do like sand, uh, what am I trying to say? Salt? Just salt? Spreading salt, like you spread sand?
Uh, we use the five fifty for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's got a little B-box.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's the one that I mentioned last meeting that I wanna replace.
Alright, okay. So, you do salt and you do chloride?
Uh, no, two different trucks.
Huh?
Two, that's, those are two different trucks.
Right, yeah, but I've been, you use salt some places and chloride some places.
Well, chloride is in the summertime.
Oh, of course.
Dust control. Salt is winter for ice control.
Oh, okay. Alright. Jeez, learn something new every month. Thank you. You guys have any more questions for Alfie?
Um, as far as that calcium tank, where would you get bits for that? Who'd you?
Uh, you know, that's a good question. I don't know that there's a supplier. It's, any of the ones that I've dealt with has come right from the, the product supplier, Gorman Brothers or Allstate's.
So, if that one, it, uh, it leaks or something, we'd probably get a similar deal or continuing to buy?
Well, I know Gorman told me that they don't do that anymore.
Oh, well.
That deal is, is not available anymore.
Oh.
Um, so, it's something we can check into. We got some time, you know, we'll need it in the, in the spring when we start doing our strip grading, but, uh, until then, we're in good shape.
Okay.
But we should keep that in mind for.
For budgeting, I want to.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we can move on to the Woodbury Volunteer Fire Department. Oh, we're right on time again.
You guys are right on schedule.
Clockwork.
Don't worry, you'll get them. We don't have a lot of changes. We're starting a status call. Um, our FEMA, we have three FEMA projects. I gotta sign those this week. Then I gotta do the EEs afterwards, so that's, we have, don't have to have that done by Monday, but I gotta sign the projects by Monday.
What's EE?
Central Elements.
Central Elements.
EEIs.
EEIs.
Yeah. That's the one with the twenty-five questions?
Oh, okay.
We met with Michelle last week and, uh, got their projects and the budgets in. It's been a bit of a challenge cause the League of Cities and Town has been a real pain in the neck to deal with.
Hmm.
I was in battle with them. They didn't respond to my emails for three weeks because we can't finalize our FEMA claim until we have a settlement from them.
Really?
They essentially told me that it could be several more months before we see a settlement.
Oh, boy.
Cause apparently, I met with the Montpelier Fire Chief, cause they have a destroyed firehouse and a broken fire truck. We love them. Um, and, uh, he said that the way this works is all of the municipal building damages have to be pooled and there's only like five million dollars to pay the claim, so I'm not sure where that eighty percent number came from, but it, the number she told me will be prorated based on spreading, uh, it out, so the money goes around everybody, so I don't.
You mean that's FEMA money or your insurance?
Oh, no, this was just eighty percent of, of what they've given us for a total that we'd get back, so fifteen grand. They could give us eighty percent of that. It wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, your total settlement, so the, in the end, you're, you're probably gonna get seventy or eighty potentially, which for us is a big, it'd be, why I'm upset with this. Picture your town office being destroyed like our building is and we're sitting here with no insulation and they're just, I'm really, so to that end, we're probably firing them. I've got a new insurance carrier, so that'll probably be in our budget this year, cause I just, this is unacceptable, really unacceptable. If this was your house, imagine being in your house in your five months and you're like, oh, we don't know what you're gonna.
And they, you know, I just saw a memo today that said, yeah, you should go ahead and make your, make your improvements even if you don't have your final number yet, but you don't have that kind of deep pockets at the fire department.
Right now, we're probably gonna exhaust our fuel budget in two months if the river going. I've, I've got a contractor and the insulation is there. Hopefully, he'll get here in the next couple of weeks to actually do it. Trying to avoid having the guys do it, cause we're, we're about to call two hundreds. We've been doing fourteen or fifteen runs a week. I don't know why, but it's been insanity. Um, so anyway, we're, we're kind of in limbo and we're also, uh, the problem with FEMA is right now, our, our repairs are, um, uh, what's the word? What's the FEMA word? They're not permanent repairs. They're.
Temporary.
Temporary repairs.
Category B.
Yes, we're category B temporary repairs, so I can't do any permanent repairs. So, like insulation's considered temporary, because if they end up paying for this, there's, there's an element of kind of mixing insurance, cause our insurance claim is anywhere from ninety-one to one twenty-five and then another seventy in contents, so it's a large number.
Yeah.
Um, and we, they gave us twenty-five upfront, but we're way through that and I'm spending, I don't, I'm borrowing money from Peter to pay Paul at this point, cause we just don't have the funds, so, um, that, to get the building insulated and strapped is where we're gonna go. The furnace has been fixed. We had to pay for a new chimney, the weather ceiling we paid for, so anyway, so I don't know where that number lands. Um, if FEMA, then we blend FEMA into all this, cause we have to, because FEMA will pay the balance of what the insurance, whatever that number is.
Whatever the difference is, yeah.
So, my dust off with Kim last week was, well, we don't need to know. FEMA doesn't need to know. And I said, well, you do need to know, because I can't settle with FEMA till I settle with you.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's that mess. So, my answer is I don't know. I'm really unhappy with the Mont League of Cities and Towns.
Yeah.
Tell them that you have eighteen months to do your permanent repairs?
Well, the, our conversation needed Paul to get off the phone, take a breather, because they were very rude. And I do know, I do know when my buttons have been pushed, I need to take a little walk and.
There is a timeline for permanent repairs.
Yeah.
Can you run like that?
Yeah, I wanted to slide more.
They can't wait for that, you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to slide more to be aware that we probably, I contacted Volunteer Fireman's Insurance Corporation. They, they don't jerk you around like this. I mean, they're, the league didn't, we had about seven thousand in damage to our pumbers last year when the house burned up on Dog Pond Road. That's a covered claim under the Volunteer Fireman's Insurance, where the league denied our claim. So, so there's big benefits for us switching. It might be more expensive, but I work in the insurance industry. To be sitting here five months is just completely outrageous and not to return. I mean, the other part that's upsetting, you send emails and phone calls. They don't. The lady got really short with me, cause I just sent her a quick email and, hey, I really would appreciate an answer to my question. And I got this nasty, nasty, and I was like, wow, to the point where I wrote back and the boss, Kelly, tried to smooth it over and informed me that FEMA doesn't need to know this, and I'm like, well, yeah, they do need to know it. So, that's what's going on there. It's, it's a mess.
How about the buyout?
So, I met with other people again.
Oh.
Yeah, nothing is easy over here. So, I'm trying to get a elevation certificate. The insurance company has us out of the flood plain, but the parking lot is in the flood plain. Meeting with buyout, they said if we're not in the flood plain, which I don't think we are, unless they change it, that lowers us down on the buyout and moves us up on the, on a potential, so the, the, the other option we have is doing a Cabot-style temporary building somewhere, which is really, I don't know how that would work. Or they may, um, I'm going through the process. I had an architect review the building. I got the town rec, the tax records from, uh, Robin. It, so I've, I've shown that we have more than fifty percent of the value of the building's damaged. So, I'm kinda showing you two paths we're on. So, one path is a buyout where they take the fair market value the day before the flood and they pay it. That's a process the town would have to go through with us. The other process is the rebuilding back where we are with a new structure that's flood resilient, where they would pay to tear that building down and rebuild a flood resilient building, whatever that looks like.
Really?
But we've always intended to use either the square footage of the annex or this, so I, I don't know how that's, we're sort of working through that process right now. So, again, all our repairs will probably stay temporary at this point, just because of the, you understand it too. It's, we can't do a permanent repair till we settle all those.
But as far as your whole, it's, you know, your, all, all your planning for all your buildings, you would like to have that stay there or?
Would, but again, I'm just concerned about flooding for real, so I just, I don't know. That's, if you think you're confused, I've been trying to wade through it. So, so anyway, that's where that's at. It's like, who knows? Hopefully, we'll get some insulation in the next couple of weeks. It's just been terribly difficult, cause there's no heat in the town hall. You gotta go and try to warm it up. You get a medical call, you gotta go in and clean your gear in this cold building, so it's just, it's been a struggle. So, hence, I'd rather not have the people, the firefighters, trying to play insulation persons. Um, but if it, it may come to it that I'm gonna have to, so, anyway, that's where that's at.
We can, so, but you can hire people if they're.
Well, I hired a guy, but the, trying to get a contractor right now, anyone in the contracting world is, so I've got a guy that's gonna fit me in. We just haven't, it hasn't light up. The insulation is there, the strapping is there, so we're gonna insulate and strap it.
So, what is it, the, the pink insulation with the paper back on it?
It's, uh, it's that green, what is it called, uh?
Not Rock Sol.
Rock Sol.
Yeah, Rockwool, Rock Sol, yeah.
Oh, so what do you cover that with?
Well, eventually, we'd put tin in there, but again, it may all have to come out, because if FEMA says keep the building, they want spray foam that doesn't get wet. If they tear the building down, we would probably do what Waterbury did, is they pour the foundation walls up like three and a half feet, so it's all concrete, and so nothing can get wet. And then you just let the water, what's a Waterbury Fire Department does, you just open all the doors, let the water run through the doors, clean up the mud and go back to business, so. Anyway, so I just still.
So, the insulation, could that be like, uh, when we took the stuff out of the fire station?
We could.
A volunteer type thing?
So, stay tuned. That's what I'm saying. We might, that might be coming. I'm gonna give the guy one more chance to do it and see if we can get it done. If not, that's probably what it's gonna come down to, is a work bee and just get it done. Cause it'd be insulating and strapping. Then we wouldn't be heating the outdoors. So, anyway, that's where that's at, so hopefully, we'll get our EEIs done in the next few weeks and then I think for, so the three projects of the station, uh, the cleanup of the parking lot and around the station, and our third project is the emergency response calls.
So, all the cleanup from downtown, that's going on your project and not ours?
Everything that the town didn't do, so like Chuck helped us with an excavator, dump truck, got all that. He did this landscaping around the building to get the water to drain, cleaning up the mud around the building.
Okay, and cleaning up the mud on the Cabot Road?
That's on, that's on the town, yeah. We didn't do any of that, yeah.
You gotta get that?
Yeah, I think they got that. We did the parking lot, our, you know, the town square park, and we kinda took that under ours, so. Not wanna say that's forty-one-ish thousand dollars.
Wow.
And I think, uh, we're doing the twenty-eight, fourteen volunteer labor thing, and I think the, um, the emergency response calls are about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Hmm.
Again, it's subject to our, our submittals and the view of some guys. I have no idea when any money's gonna show up. So, that's where that's at.
Okay.
The culvert project, I think, is gonna have an impact on everybody. That's, cause they've gotta dig, you see they're digging a temporary channel right across your front yard, right through there.
I noticed that tonight when it came up.
Yeah.
I'm surprised you did in context.
I was wondering where it was gonna go.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm surprised, because I mean, they got, they had to get a sign off from fire department. They had to get a sign off from the town.
You didn't do a sign off.
Oh, you did do it. Oh, okay, so, okay.
Yeah, and we've signed off, so what's happening, I spoke with the guy today. What they're installing now is the temporary culvert and the brook will be bypassing its normal location. They are not gonna build the temporary road.
Oh.
He doesn't wanna do that. He said it's foolish. They're gonna do half and half.
Oh, okay.
And they have one month. He didn't know if they're gonna get it done or not, he thought, so. So, they still are on our site and have destroyed our leach field, cause they had blabbing excavators all over it, so.
Right.
I've got, I've got, I think I checked your phone. I texted you to see if you actually got it.
They didn't come through.
Okay, it's, I'll, I'll give it to you for free then.
Oh.
Um, uh, so, so that's, we, they've been okay so far. They're day one. They, they're frustrated. They wanted to start this a month ago. The state's been jerking them around, but we had to go to bid. Now, it's an emergency project. Here we are in the winter doing it, so that's gonna slow things down. So, we're gonna have the traffic lights in one lane still, but no temporary bypass road.
So, when they put the culvert in, it's gonna have to be in more pieces?
Yeah, it'll go in two sections, yeah. So, it's, it's gonna be interesting to put a temporary culvert in that covers both lanes and then put the permanent culvert in in two sections. So, anyway, stay tuned for that.
Yeah.
I'm starting world war with the state to try to, cause my estimate for the septic design and installation's about forty thousand dollars, so.
Oh, my god.
We don't have the money, so I'm starting to bug them for money and I just, the state of Vermont's not good neighbors, so I just don't know where that's gonna go for a while, so.
Yeah, well, you don't really need that until your building is built, right?
Well, by the way, about getting that, wanting to get our septic converted, cause we're supposed to start in May.
Yeah.
We're still on track for that to happen. I just don't know. Who knows? At this point, I don't.
Did they move that bank that they were gonna move?
Well, now he said they're not gonna move the road, they don't need to move the bank.
Oh, darn.
That would've helped us, but so, whoever knew it was gonna help us, it's not happening, so. So, that's where we're at with that.
Okay.
I think that handles FEMA and the culvert project.
Okay.
Um, budget. Um, budget-wise, we probably should come see you at the second meeting you have in December, just to give you our articles.
Okay.
Cause we'll have our standard budget article, the truck fund and the station, fire station.
Yeah, we'll probably have to have another one or two special meetings.
So you just let us know what meeting we need to come, we'll present, our budget gets approved at our next business meeting, which is the first Tuesday in December. After that, if we can meet with you, drop that stuff off. Um, we've already met with Callis, so we just need to meet with you. Um, I think that's that. Unless you got questions.
No, I'm not nearly as confused as you, because we have Skip, we have Skip to do all that.
Well, he's confused, he's just not feeling.
He can be the confused.
It's a confusing process, is it not?
It's a federal project.
It's a federal process. Our problem is it's complicated, Cabot is simple, because they don't have funding for their new building already.
Oh.
If we had no funding, they would be stepping up, but that stepping up's not always good, because when I talked to, I talked to a member of their select board last, last week. Um, it's really gonna drive the cost of their building up, cause FEMA's gonna mandate that they have sleeping quarters in the building and have a whole bunch of other things, so. One of the, anyone who's dealt with federal funding of anything, once you federally fund something, they have a lot of rules.
Did you say Cabot?
Cabot, so Cabot is, has, is under construction on a four thousand square foot temporary fire station over by the ball field. They're planning, they had been planning to build a new fire station, but hadn't funded it yet, so. Once that's, temporary building's done, then FEMA's gonna work with them to fund their new building. And the town, I think, will be responsible for twenty-five percent, but I think the cost is gonna be pretty high because of the FEMA requirements in the building. So, anyway, that's what I was told, so it's one of those two-edged swords.
Yeah, so they were, so they're, we're already in the process of building a new?
No, no, they were in the planning process.
And FEMA's gonna help with that, but not with ours, so.
Not with ours, because we have funded it already.
Oh.
So this is where kind of, they called ours a complicated project. They said it was complicated, I'm like, well, because you, we were already complicated, cause the old building, the new building, which is funded and permitted. And then you throw V-Trans in the middle of it, so everything's a.
So even though Cabot is a volunteer fire department, they're requiring them, with FEMA money, requiring to have four sleeping quarters?
Well, I don't know four, but they said something about having sleeping quarters, I'm like, okay. I don't know if that's true or not, but it wouldn't surprise me in a federal thing. Federal stuff is really weird, they, they have their requirements and you will meet them. Again, my experience getting federal money, a lot of times it drives your project cost way up, so you don't always end up. You always end up with a nice project, but it's a lot more expensive than what you probably otherwise would've built. So, I wouldn't take that in bank, but that's what I was told.
Yeah.
Cause I was frustrated, I expressed my frustration to FEMA, I said, why are they so far down the road? We barely had the lady here a couple of times, you know, and that was the reason where. And their building was also condemned, their fire trucks are parked all over town.
Oh.
Um, it's one of those deals, it would've been better to have it wrecked, you know, just don't leave it half wrecked, that's, we're sort of in half a spot, so. Anyway, there we are.
Okay, well, thank you again.
Yeah, I have less hair than I had before. I have less hair than I had.
(laughing).
Yeah.
So, any more questions from you?
No questions.
Want some calls?
Not really, no. I don't know that I've trained enough for that.
We can take care of that.
(laughing).
Fourteen times one week, thirteen times last week.
Geez.
This is rescue calls or fire calls, together?
Is it people like with clogged wood stoves, like clogged chimneys?
Well, there's a lot of that, there's, there's a bound, I was asked the same question by someone else, and right now. The mental health crisis is causing a significant impact to emergency services. And it morphs from medicals to fires, cause we had an individual that was having a mental health crisis, and then they decided to start launching fireworks inside their apartment. Which created some issues.
Geez.
Let's just say.
He's got all kinds of calls.
Yeah, he's what?
So they're trying to get you to join?
I.
We need folks, come on! Make a great member.
I don't know, I think I got my hands full, Paul, right now.
You can fill your hands so much more.
I bet you could.
But that's what, that's driving it, that the, oh, I work for Hardwick Rescue and Reese's Monthly, ambulance, it's a, it's a big issue. It's driving, tremendously driving up everybody's call volume.
Worse than drugs or both combined?
Well, when you add the drugs, the mental health problems.
It's with us.
Yeah.
A big problem, it's a big problem. And there's no fix, because they, we had the person hauled away, and they recycle them right back. And then in a couple of weeks, they're having a mental health crisis, one individual was on the phone with nine-one-one for forty-eight hours. Call nine-one-one, I'm gonna kill myself, hang up the phone, we get dispatch, lights are out, leave.
Oh, man, that, that sounds frustrating.
I'm gonna shoot the neighbor, I'm gonna shoot myself, and you know, it's just, this is the. And then we kind of get jammed in the middle, because police, it's not illegal to commit suicide. So if you're just in your apartment and wanna kill yourself, that's, it's America, man. But then they call EMS and go, stand by, it's like, what are we doing here? And then, if he's not getting enough attention, then you start launching bottle rockets out your dining room window. Or throwing firecrackers on the neighbor's porch.
You have more patience than I do.
Mm.
So that's what's going on, that's what's driving it, that's what's driving it. I'm just shocked at the call, we're usually a hundred and fifteen calls, we're about to hit call two hundred.
That's hard.
Hmm. That's in this calendar year?
Yeah, in this calendar year. It seemed like July, and it was like someone flipped a switch in July, it's just.
So when you, speaking of the town report, when you submit your, um, budget, you'll have your fire chiefs report and all that stuff? That's always so nice how that comes in.
Yeah, well, we'll have it finally submitted till January first, cause I want to get all the calls in.
Oh, okay, alright, oh, okay, that's right, you need to have your toes.
We'll have the budget articles, and I'll get the, I'll get the chief's report due like the first week of January.
Okay.
Well, thank you. And I'll have the patience for that kind of stuff.
You do some poor job.
Yeah, I don't know, it doesn't sound it.
Leave me alone.
You like working with people.
Some people.
So, Skip, you wanna tell me what's, what I don't know about the open meeting law?
No, I'm not gonna tell anyone, I'm not gonna lecture anyone, whoever. Uh, so you sent me an email saying that you were aware of the requirements for the five-day posting of draft minutes. And that's, that's fine, you know, that's what draft minutes are all about. So you post them, if there's anything wrong with the draft minutes, they get corrected. And then, tonight, did you approve the meeting minutes from the November meeting? Okay, so then they should be posted within a couple of days, I think.
If I remember to attach them.
Yes, please.
So, yeah, we give them to Robin, Robin sends it to you, and you put them on the website.
Draft minutes are fine, that's what they're there for, you know, if they're incorrect, you know, someone who has been, uh, misquoted or something. Gives you a call and say, hey, I didn't say that, they get corrected, that's fine, you know, that's what draft minutes are for. However, that being said, part of your email said that these are for you and not to be posted on the website.
Well, the reason I did those.
Can I finish it?
Please.
Thanks, so, that is in direct conflict with the law.
I know.
And, so I won't read you one VSA chapter three twelve, but it says they should be, they must be posted within five days on the town website.
If the website is regularly updated.
It is regular, I can attest to that, that it's.
Well, as far as I know, it's, I don't think we can do it updating it, so.
Well, I can attest to that, since I update it, not only for the select board, but for the planning commission, conservation commission. Um, so anyhow, it is updated, and so this one VSA three twelve compels you to post these on the town website.
And it also tells you to do it within five days, which I can't always do.
Well, then.
Bad.
You know, I won't say what comes to mind, but, you know, within five days, you know, people might get grumbling. You mentioned a citizen of Woodbury's name, that this might placate him if they're posted within five days. I won't give that gentleman's name out, but, you know, you should try your best to try and get them done within five days and be in compliance with the law, that's all.
The reason I, yeah, the reason I did that, tried to get that out too, I was afraid, I thought maybe you needed it because of, uh, something to. Having to do with appointing, by appointing Danielle as the.
No.
You didn't, you didn't need anything on that, so that's why I did it, because I thought you might need that.
No, cause you had, you know, voted on it and voted in the affirmative that she would be able to work.
I didn't know if you'd need anything in writing.
No, it's on tape.
Okay, so anyways, that's why I did that, because I thought you might need something.
But anyhow, so you're aware of the five-day requirement?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's it on that. Any questions?
Just a comment, um, I notice a ton of work, Diana, and if you wanna split that load a little more evenly, I would be willing to help. Um, cause I know that's a lot.
Yeah. It's much easier when you guys had a scribe.
When you what?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I might have, I might have someone, an idea of someone for that.
Awesome.
And when I was on the board, it was a challenge to get them out within five days. However, they were out, so. Anyhow, moving on to FEMA.
Yeah.
So I spent a whole week this afternoon with FEMA, and, uh, Michelle, you know, she's, she's very good. She's quite supportive of us, and today we worked on assigning projects to some of our, uh, some of our damage inventories. So if you can recall from our last, uh, present, my last presentation, there were sixty-two individual damage inventories. So today we assigned projects to thirty-one of those.
Did she agree to combine some of them?
We have, we combined thirty-one individual damage inventories into five projects.
Wow.
So that lessens the amount of paperwork that Danielle and I have to produce. And so, these projects, and this is only half, half of the projects for the town of Woodbury. The seventy-five percent figure that FEMA will reimburse is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. That's as it stands today.
What was that number again?
Just the FEMA seventy-five percent of these projects that have, these damage inventories that now have projects. That money totals a hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
So you narrowed this down to five projects?
No, no, there, we have thirty-one more damage inventories.
Oh, okay. Five someplace, or eight hypothetically?
To put into projects.
Oh, okay.
However, those projects might be arranged, what I tried to do today is, the rail trail is one project, because that seemed like.
Great, that's like eight things here.
It seemed like the best utilization for all the work you guys have done would be to put that into one project. We lumped Old Cory Road, Blake Hill Road into one project, East Hill Road is one project. County Road minus the extension is one project. And the Cabot Road, project one, which is pretty interesting, I'll talk briefly about that, that's one project. Again, to the total of a hundred, a hundred and thirty-one dollars and a hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. And this represents completed work, all the work has been completed. So Danielle and I have until January fourteenth to compile all the essential elements of information. Send them along to FEMA, have them accept it, and then they can make out what they need, which is called a DDS.
Ooh.
And once they do the DDS design, I forget what that acronym means. They'll send that back to us for our signature, to make sure that it encompasses everything that's on each individual project. Or in, within each individual project.
Those are for projects that are completed, right?
All the work is completed, except for County Road Extension.
Yeah.
And the bridges on Highway twenty-three and twenty-four.
I wanna talk to you about the town office also.
Yeah, town office isn't done, you know, there are a couple of, the larger ones, the bridges on Town Highway, Town Highway twenty-three and twenty-four. That's gonna be challenging.
Yeah.
So, what I found out today, and Paul's gonna hate me when I send him an email. Categories B and C, being, B being temporary, temporary work, and C being permanent work. C categories, they will compensate you for regular time, in other words, no overtime. Or regular time plus overtime. Over category B work, they believe that that work should only be completed using overtime money. So they wouldn't pay anyone for using regular hours, it had to be all overtime hours. So I said, I said, that doesn't make sense. They said, so, you know, we had a discussion, and Michelle called up her supervisor and I had a discussion with him. And he, he said, well, this is the way FEMA works. He said, change all your category Bs, all the work that was done on a temporary slash emergency basis. Change them from category Bs to category Cs, and you'll be fine.
What? That sounds like the opposite. You said, you're saying that they wanted to, for temporary work, they thought it should be overtime?
Temporary work, they'll only pay overtime labor.
Yeah, cause they, you know, yeah, I mean, it makes sense, it's an emergency and all that.
That doesn't really make sense, but I understand, I can kind of understand where they would come up with that, even though I don't think it makes sense.
But permanent work, maybe they're thinking, you know, you're doing, let you get it wrong to it.
Well, and as we explained to them, you know, that this temporary work was done by the road crew. And they were not doing their regular work.
Right.
So the regular work got put aside to do, quote, emergency repairs to make the roads at least passable. So police, fire and EMS could get to folks, and that didn't work, so.
Yeah, I mean, we were, we were not fixing them in the way that we normally would.
No.
I mean, we were throwing things together, we were hustling, you know.
And that's why we categorized them as, you know, temporary work, category Bs. They said, change it to category C, and we'll pay you.
But not overtime?
They didn't work overtime, see, that's, that's the deal. There was no overtime hours used for any of these projects.
Oh, okay, alright, I guess I'm.
They believe that all category B labor should be overtime. I don't know why, you know, I just threw.
Till like you work forty hours a week and then you do your emergency work.
I just threw my hands up and I said, okay, as long as I don't go to jail, you know, I'll change these. And I didn't change them, the FEMA representative today changed them. So, I was sure that we have that distinction, that I didn't change them.
Does that cause any problems, as far as like not being able to take something that was done as a temporary repair? And now not being able to get money to make it a permanent repair, because they'll have already paid?
So, case in point, say the Woodbury Hardwick Rail Trail. There are four different sections that Alfie and his crew worked on. Let's say, let's take section four dash four, the landslide. We had category B work and category C work. Category B work was for, say, thirty-three hundred dollars, that's temporary stuff. Category C work, permanent stuff, was twenty-two hundred, for a total of like fifty-five hundred dollars. Now these guys are together, so we'll get compensated for the fifty-five hundred dollars.
Gotcha, but it's just now all category C?
C.
Okay.
Yeah. So anything that said category C is, uh, category B is now all category C.
I'm sorry, you said what?
All Bs or Cs?
All Bs or Cs.
All Bs or Cs, okay.
However, their head spun around a little bit, but the town offices, which is a category E. That's for equipment. For category E also, uh, is for the radar speed sign, that's a category E. And then we had one category A for debris removal, and that caused a little commotion, so.
Huh.
Anyhow, we're getting through it, uh, so Danielle and I will be working on these five projects. Anyhow, we're getting through it. So Danielle and I will be working on these five projects. And then we have a meeting with Michelle from FEMA, not next week because she's in training, but the following week, to complete the projects for the remaining thirty-one damage inventories. So I'm thinking we'll probably have another seven or eight projects. And then we'll start working.
Start working.
See if we can get some money into Woodbury.
Really?
She said Lenny's around.
Oh, really?
Still with us, wow, all right.
Where's his report? We talked about, we talked about the bridges a little bit. And, you know, I indicated that these bridges are unknown from the state. Aren't they charging us for the bridges?
No.
She said the state is charging direct for some of the towns she works with for temporary bridges. They must really like you.
Who you got there first?
Maybe. I've been on some business with them prior to here.
And it's okay with the state for you to put railings on those bridges?
That's the question.
Nobody asked the state. The state doesn't have anything to do with it.
I, I have to contact them to find out the rating, so I'll ask them if they're okay with that, too.
So if they're not, what are you gonna do for bridge, uh, for a railing for her? Say, just close your eyes, Carol, and go across the bridge?
No, she won't. She's our, she's on my case about that. Uh, she's saying that her plow guy won't plow.
Oh, okay.
Because of it, and.
Did her old bridge have railings?
Not, not anything spectacular, no. If anything, it was maybe just a two-by-four.
I was gonna say, I don't remember railing when I ran across the bridge.
Yeah. So, uh, if I do put railings, it's not gonna affect the integrity of the bridge at all. It's wood and I'm gonna put wooden rails, you know, just four by four and lag bolt them to it and then.
Yeah, I mean, they're really guide rails rather than guardrails.
Exactly, that's right.
So people can see where they're going and.
To litiate the, the edge of the bridge is all it's really going to be.
Right. I was just asking, it wasn't our bridge.
Right.
They might have some kind of requirement that.
Well, these bridges are designed for a skidder. So they're not, skitters don't usually need.
Right, because sometimes their tires hang off the bridge.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, so I don't think that they're gonna mind, but I will ask them and I will make sure they're okay with it. Uh, worst case, we buy the bridge. You know, it's, 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 I'm hearing the state pays five thousand dollars for the, for the bridge to be built. So.
That's a bargain compared to how.
That's a bargain.
Yeah, it is.
For the five thousand for what?
For, for these bridge panels to be built.
Oh.
That's what, that's, that's what I've heard. So if, if.
So when the state buys them for skidder, that's what they pay with it?
Right, but they're buying fifteen of them at a time, right? So, uh, so what I'm, the only reason I'm saying that is if that, if they think that we destroy the integrity of the bridge by putting railings on there, we say, okay, we'll buy the bridge from you.
That's perfect. We want to buy it anyway.
We'll have a bridge.
I don't think that's gonna be the case, but, um, they've been really good. They've been very good to, to deal with, so. But I will ask that question just to make sure.
Maybe they were just sort of running out of bridges at some point and started.
I think it was, I think it was timing. I think I called them right at the right time. You know, because every, all, well, the town of Greensboro wanted the bridge that we have on, on Town Highway twenty-four. They called, they called it that day, actually the day, and they'd already given it to me, so.
Got lucky.
I got really lucky on that one.
We all got lucky.
Yeah, so, uh, but yeah, I will, I will reach out to them and, and, uh, get those questions answered.
So back to.
So that's all I have on today.
Have you seen this, uh, adjustment for the town office? It has a lot of prices in here about things that they, because I'm a little concerned that you've got this in here for forty-eight hundred dollars or eighty-five hundred dollars. And, um, there's a whole lot of other, I think they came up with a total of about thirteen thousand dollars, I think. And after depreciation, it was ten thousand dollars. Do you want to look at this and see?
Because, and, and the reason why I don't, I'm not trying to be flippant or anything like that, is that the damage inventory is just an estimate.
Okay.
So once the final numbers are in, I want to look at that for sure.
All right.
And adjust the damage inventory and the project, because the town offices is gonna be a single project. And adjust the damage inventory accordingly, and then submit the project for X number of dollars. And they'll be real dollars. They won't be estimates. Because anything you do in a project, you have the estimated cost and then the actual cost. So the actual cost, I believe, may go up a little bit. I believe. Not a lot. Because some of the forms you just, you shake your head at. It almost compels you to have the actual amount go up a little bit.
I mean, this guy, I mean, they, they priced out painting the stair treads for number of dollars or cents per linear foot. It was all really, really detailed at some point here.
That's a good estimate.
Huh?
That's a good estimate.
Yeah. Yeah, one of your feet of sheet rock, ceiling prime, interior door, paint the door, doorknob. Yeah, very detailed.
When it's all said and done, give me the figures.
We'll see.
We have eighteen months from July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So I told the emergency management director he didn't have to bother to come if he didn't have anything to say. So they did, we did, Robin sent in the, whatever the antenna people needed, and they got an email back that said something was backordered or something was, was expected. So. Okay.
Speaking of antennas, we, our truck radios were bothering, were not working well. My guy finally came through and found that the antenna that is mounted on the building at the, on the top of Cory had failed.
Oh.
So that's why it was, that's why we weren't getting, we weren't transmitting. So he's installed a new antenna.
Oh.
And things are much better.
Great.
He gave us a bill, and I'm assuming Randy's got that in the, in the mix.
It's in that file.
Oh, how much is it?
Didn't you sign up on it?
Well, I didn't memorize them all.
So, so almost eighteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, it was second, yeah, because we had budgeted a thousand, that's right. It was a little, it was seventeen hundred or something.
Don't keep that, Randy, I haven't signed it yet.
Communications, one thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-three cents. So, yeah, that I can line. I'm pouty. We're over budget.
Actually has that budgeted? That's good, that's interesting. So that's good. We don't have to buy any new radios?
Well, that was just the antenna. That was just the antenna. I'd still need to have him come back and check the rest of the radios. Most, I mean, that, that's helped a lot. I mean, at least now we can communicate back and forth. But I'd still want him to come and just check and make sure that, you know, sometimes the antenna gets hit by a, by a brush or wire gets loose, you know, all that.
Flying granite.
Flying granite, right.
Yeah.
So do you have any dead spots in town right now where you still can't?
Uh, yes. Yeah, there's still, there will always be those probably. It seems like when we put it on to the repeater, there's like a different setting on the radios, which goes to repeater, that helps a lot, you know, in some of those low spots where we can't, we can't reach each other. But yes, much, much better. I mean, it was very frustrating before. I mean, sometimes you could see the truck that you wanted to talk to and you couldn't get through to them. So it's much better now.
Okay.
Oh, no, we need to schedule, you need to get your calendar out.
For what?
We need budgeting, personnel policy. We need to schedule these dates because we have to move a select board meeting because we're not doing it on a Christmas. So we need some dates moved here.
I'm, yeah, I wanted to hear from Chris before we decide on that, because I, I really don't know. He didn't really say why he wasn't gonna be here tonight.
Um, we don't have a whole lot of time to plan it.
I know, and I suggested the, maybe the first and third Monday nights in December.
Would it make sense to tentatively?
Monday night.
Yeah.
So every Monday would be minus Christmas.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to tentatively plan and just make, you know, make sure with him that he can attend?
Okay.
Just by the time he's got it.
Yeah, he's someone that has a little more difficulty with scheduling than I do or you do somewhere around.
So here's a thought. How about a Tuesday when we're already at work?
I was gonna mention that. I was thinking about that, too. Would you prefer that? Because you're, you're working.
Yeah, I wouldn't have to. Yeah, it would be double, yeah.
Okay. Tuesdays in standard.
Yeah, that works for me.
So we're doing the fifth? And what are we moving the select board meeting to? The twenty-fifth, Christmas?
Monday is Christmas, so let's do it the Wednesday after Christmas.
The twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Select board.
I'm not totally sure I can do that. When is Christmas vacation? Like, school vacation? The whole week is vacation? Okay, I can do that then. Yes.
If you send me these dates, I can post them on the website.
Okay. So two Tuesdays, the second Tuesday and the third Tuesday.
So the nineteenth, so the twelfth and the nineteenth we're doing for special, for budgeting?
Twelfth, oh, what do we do, what, what do we say about the fifth?
Okay. So the fifth?
The fifth is next Tuesday. Okay. So the fifth and the nineteenth?
The fifth, we will do budgeting. And you said the twelfth or the nineteenth?
This is the nineteenth.
Well, we need three, right, two budget meetings.
Fifteenth and the nineteenth and the regular meeting.
Personnel policy.
So that's like, that's all of those days, and then the twenty-seventh for the regular meeting? Is that?
We have a regular meeting on the eleventh.
Oh, geez.
I just, I can't even, can't even estimate about the personnel policy because we still don't have a copy. And I asked Chris again today if he could dig it out.
It was like such a long time ago before the flood. I feel like maybe we should just start fresh.
Good one.
We all put comments in. I know, like, Alfie didn't really get a chance to comment, and then.
Right, exactly. That's right. And these should all have, we should all have a chance to comment. The one I have here on the top of my pile does not have a date on it. It has a whole bunch of comments or blackouts by other people and.
I'm sorry, can I stop us back just to the dates? I want to make sure I got it right. So are we doing twelfth, fifteenth is a budget meeting?
Yeah.
Twelve, twelve is the budget meeting?
No.
Is that right or no?
No, the eleventh is a regular meeting.
Select board meeting.
Right.
Talking about for budgeting, two budgets, a personnel.
So just for the special meetings, not for the regular ones?
The fifth and the nineteenth.
Okay.
Tuesday, the fifth, and Tuesday, the nineteenth.
And are we doing a meeting on twelve, twelve also for a personnel policy?
And a personnel policy?
I'm just asking, I'm not, um.
Maybe we won't have much to do at the eleventh meeting. We can go over it, you know.
You can make a really light agenda.
Right. Things are getting a lot easier. Not as many emergencies. Look, it's not even eight o'clock.
Randy?
Yes?
Would you want me at one of these meetings to put a line item in for anticipated FEMA reimbursement?
Yeah. I think that'll be in FY twenty-five. Do you have any idea?
Yeah, I probably would be. I can find, uh, they probably won't, they probably won't promise that I can get a ballpark.
Or we might get.
I mean, I have a company.
Personnel policy.
Because it's a two-state process. FEMA approves it, then sends it to the state. And we, or the town of Woodbury, signs a subgrant agreement with the state. And then the state actually, Department of Public Safety, controls the funds. So the funds will flow from FEMA to the state Department of Public Safety, then to the town. Similar to, similar to the operating? Okay, let me know.
So one of those, I'd like Alfie at, one of those Tuesdays, if possible.
When you're ready.
Not unless we sit down, you're able to pop in, and you and I go through. But, yeah, all of those, I want all of, all of the, the grants have to be on there.
And all these little, like, how much are you gonna spend on, uh, grater blades and?
Oh, yeah, going through it, yeah, the whole highway budget. But it's the grants that I want in and out, revenue and expenses. So it's not guessing, yeah. So it's very clear, because we have a lot of projects coming up in the summer, this summer.
Yeah, that'll be interesting, like outside services.
We had budgeted, I think, ten thousand.
Yeah, we had budgeted some for the road, uh, equipment, but there should be a huge amount. Where would all that money that we're spending on that excavator be on here?
It's in FEMA.
Oh, so it's not in the regular budget? Oh.
On your due-to-do from, that hundred and sixty-two thousand is where it is.
That's, oh, wow. Oh, okay. I thought it was gonna be part of the budget. That's good. So.
So we're all gonna need vacation in January.
You'll be doing your calendar for then. So I did want to make another adjustment to the agenda.
No, it's mine, it's mine.
I have it going through my, my intestines.
You should hear it when I lay down.
I wanted to add under the executive session, I wanted to add something under one VSA three-one-three A-one-B, Labor Relations Agreements with Employees. I think that, I think under that you can just talk about. I think that, I think under that you can just talk about employee issues. I wanted to ask Brandy to stay for that.
Should I?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's rock this up.
So, yeah, I'm sorry about the first note call, apparently. What to do, but.
Yeah, so I have a question about your executive sessions. I've noticed when I post your meeting minutes, that the last several meetings, you've not gone into executive session. So the previous meetings that you've gone into executive session, you should give a report of what was the final outcome of that executive session.
If there was a decision made, that there wasn't any action taken and there's nothing to report.
Well, you should say that.
Okay.
Because.
Yeah, sometimes I do say that, just no action was taken.
Right. But you, you don't have to report individual executive sessions. However, when you stop the executive session for whatever purpose you're initiating it again, you should give a report. And I can send you that statute, if you wish.
I'll report for each executive session.
At eight-thirty-five, we entered executive session and at eight-forty-five, we left.
You don't, you could do that if you wanted, but when you, say if you're talking about labor relations. And you finish that topic in executive session. How many, how many sessions it takes? Say if it takes five sessions, then you come to a decision or not. You should report what that decision was or that you didn't make a decision.
Well, that way I can go back to the minutes and if it was a raise or if it was that they're in the minutes.
Yeah, well, yeah, if we do, I do, if we make a decision, I do put it in the minutes. Quite often, we just talk about things that we don't know what to do with, so.
We can say that too.
We threw up our hands again. That's a good one, yeah.
Do we, are we skipping the town office building stuff? Chris isn't here. Should we leave for him?
I guess. I mean, it keeps getting punted down the road, but I think, um, making slow progress.
Yeah?
I mean, you know.
We have a list.
Well, you have, huh?
A list of items that we'd like to do.
Yeah, that's true.
More than we had last time.
That's true, and I have it. I even, this is why I thought we should have somebody to be like the manager.
Thank you both. Yeah, you too.
Because there are so many moving parts here. Here's my list. There are just so many different contractors and so many different, you know, you do your sheet rock and then you have your painting and then you do your heating system and then you do, you need a plumber to do the pressure tank and there's just so much. But I know you didn't like the idea of hiring somebody, but I still.
I just think in that space, it's not that complicated. I don't, I don't feel like we need to hire someone for that. My guys.
I was thinking we could reach out to try to find someone and then maybe offer to pay them a little bit if they're willing to do it, but.
I feel better about taking volunteer advice, but, um, and honestly, I'm pretty comfortable filling that role if that's, you know, helpful.
All right, well, that's, that's good then. I'm sure you're used to managing projects.
Bye. Have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Oh, yeah, so we're gonna enter the, yeah, we're gonna.
Just wait and hear that.
I make a motion that we enter the executive session.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.